All right, we're going to call to order the regular meeting of the Common Council of the City of Platteville for Tuesday, May 22, 2018, and we'll start with roll call.
Sina Sharp.
Here.
Barbara Doss.
Here.
Robin Klein.
Here.
Don Francis.
Here.
Barbara Stockhausen.
Here.
Ken Killian.
Here.
Eileen Nichols.
Here. The first item this evening is a public hearing for ordinance 1806 amending the zoning map of planned unit development, and we'll start with staff presentation.
This request involves the property at 555 North Chestnut Street, which is the former Gray's Nursing Home property. The nursing home has closed. It's been closed for a while now. The property is for sale. And actually, the nursing home owns two adjacent properties on Court Street, 530 and 540, North Court Street. Those properties are being sold as a package. The applicant is interested in purchasing those properties, and when he was looking for, obviously, a different use for the nursing home than nursing home, the logical use was for an apartment building. And actually, I had nobody contacting me about that property, asking questions about nursing home or some other related uses. All the questions that I did get were related to apartment buildings or group homes of some sort. So that seems to be the logical use for that property. So the applicant would like to convert that nursing home building into a four-unit apartment building. And as we started looking at the approvals that would be needed to do that, we came across some other issues with the current property as it relates to zoning and building codes. Sometime in the past, it appears the nursing home building was expanded, and when they did that, they actually built over the lot line, which is not permitted under building codes or zoning codes. So there's some issues moving forward with that situation. So to address that, they did apply for, and the planning commission did approve the removing that lot line between those, be it the 555 North Chestnut Street and the 540 North Court Street properties. So that took care of that problem, but there's some other issues. The proposed four-unit apartment building would not be permitted in the present zoning, which is our two-one-to-family residential. The 540 North Court Street property is a three-unit apartment building, which would also not be permitted, so that's illegal, nonconforming use. That structure and that use on that lot is, the lot isn't large enough for that use, so it's also nonconforming due to the lot size. The proposed four-unit building would not meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance because of the lot size. Several of the setbacks for the existing buildings are not met, so there's some nonconforming situations with that. So moving forward, those types of situations makes it difficult to get financing and to, insurance companies don't tend to like nonconforming structures and et cetera. So to address all these issues, from a zoning standpoint, they really had two options. One is to apply for a planned unit development, so that basically, if the council approves the use in the current package, it basically becomes conforming to the zoning ordinance at that point. The other option would be to request a rezoning of the property to our three multifamily residential, and they would still require several variances to the zoning ordinances. So from the approval standpoint, the planned unit development option seemed to be the most logical for staff, as well as the applicant agreed that would be the most direct approach to try. So that's what they're requesting this evening. So as I mentioned, the lot line removal has already been taken to the planning commission. If this all goes forward, they will have to drop a certified served map and have it recorded before it's legal, but that approval has taken place. As far as other changes to the property, really, they're, for the most part, would be internal. The nursing home would be converted through interior remodeling, basically, into the four units. It'd be three one-bedroom apartments and one two-bedroom apartment. They would have to add some additional entrance doors and stairs to get to the building, but that would be about it for the exterior of the structure. They would be widening the existing driveway, which is on the north side of the apartment building, proposed apartment building. So they'd be widening that to get additional parking for the apartment building. They should be able to get, at a minimum, one space per unit, possibly one space per bedroom in the building. Other than that, there's no changes proposed to the 530 North Court, so that technically isn't even part of this planned unit development, but it will be part of their ownership. No other changes are proposed to the 540 North Court Street property. So as I mentioned, that seemed to be the most logical request, as far as the process for this to follow, from the staff's opinion, and it also seems to be the most logical use for that property based on the size of the existing buildings. So the other thing I should mention, that normally planned unit developments are kind of a two-step process. You kind of do the general development plan, which lays out the general idea of what you're going to use the property for, and then come in with more specifics as far as the building size, location, parking, et cetera. Since basically everything's already there, it didn't really make sense to split into two, so they have requested a one-step approval process, which is permitted under the ordinance. So staff would recommend approval of the planned unit development and would also recommend approval of doing it in the one-step process. Any questions?
Joe, the other property on Court Street, is that south of the, is it the property just south, or is it the property north?
So the 540 North Court, it would be exactly in line with the
Right.
nursing home building, and then the one to the south of that.
Okay. And the lot to the north of this proposed unit is kind of a double lot that goes through from one street to the other?
With the removal of that lot line, yes, it would go
No, the next door.
The next one to the north, yes, that would go from Court Street to Chestnut.
So it already does go from?
Yes.
Okay. That's what, it looks like that, but I just wanted to verify that. Okay.
Questions for Joe from anyone else?
Well, I could leave, give my questions to the applicant. Are you the applicant?
Yeah, he'll be coming up next
Okay.
to speak. So this is time for, if you have any questions for staff right now.
I'm just unclear about the, there's a space in between the two buildings, right? 540 and the nursing home?
Yes.
Why not have a lot line there? Why are they all one? I don't understand.
It really wouldn't gain you anything, because you still would not have enough setback to make it legal. And I'm not, to be totally honest, I'm not sure what kind of space is in there, but by the time you get the retaining wall and the foundation walls between the two buildings, you'd still be dealing with a nonconforming situation.
So does 540, is that the right number, function as a separate residence?
Yes.
So is it possible
There's three apartments, but it's separate from the other building.
someday that that would be split and owned by two different people and operated separately?
Theoretically, it could, but then you'd still have, you'd have to basically reverse the planned unit development, and then you'd have to get a variance for each structure because of the setback from that lot line. And the other issue, it still would raise an issue from a building code standpoint, because you have to have a minimum setback distance from a lot line for apartment buildings to meet fire code separation, and I'm not sure they would be able to meet that. So it's just, it's much cleaner, easier to remove the lot line completely.
Have a buyer willing to manage both buildings, and it would take a lot of work to separate the two buildings, so we're just getting rid of the lot line.
And that's the reason they're basically selling it as a package.
Any other questions? All right, next is applicant statement. If you come up to the microphone, give your name and address, please.
Michael Ostro, 650 North Water Street here in Platteville. As far as an applicant statement goes, I mean, Joe pretty much covered everything there is to cover. I'm assuming I'm going to get some questions, and that's probably where I'm going to do better at giving additional information. Couple of things I did want to stress is, this is not something that I've done the very first time. This is something that I've done many times before, whether it be in other properties that I own here at Platteville, or when I was in real estate out in the Pacific Northwest. Seems like a very logical use for the building, considering the neighborhood that it's in and a practical use for it. As a developer, I'm not coming in and saying, "I'm going to pop the roof and add nine stories and try to get a parking lot in by demolishing four houses." I'm just trying to make the best use out of the building as it sits and using the best use for parking, so it doesn't change the feel of the neighborhood. That's one of the reasons why we went with four units, because it makes sense. It kind of fits the need of one bedrooms within the Platteville community, and we're able to get the parking in without making massive changes to the exterior of the building or having the neighborhood changed in any way, shape, or form. We're also going to give the parking back that Gray's had set off on the street for the nursing home, but the city council took care of that at the last meeting, so I don't get to offer that as a sweetener. Also, we had the state building inspector go through the property a couple of weeks ago when they were in town and basically gave us the lowdown of the few things that we would have to do to make it meet state-approved plans, which we would have to go through and do. And other than a few ADA things, she said it would not be a big deal to do. Basically, it was going to be a whole lot easier in getting approval to do that than it would be to go in and try to reopen the nursing home. And the last thing I want to make a point of is, I'm not coming here in front of the council looking for tax benefits or money or anything like that. I'm just looking to have the property rezoned and the lot line taken care of, so that we can adequately use the property for what our investment plans are. And with that being said, I'll answer any questions.
Questions for the applicant?
I had a question, a couple of questions. 540 North Court, it's listed here in the reading as a three-unit property. I looked at it, and it has four gas meters and four electric meters, so is it four units?
It's being presented to us as a three-bedroom. I've actually not been in all the units of that property, but it's being sold to us as a three. The fourth could be a non-use meter, or it could be for some sort of common area that is in the entryway there.
Well, the reason I ask is because I was thinking about whether any parking could come from that property, 540 North Court, for usage by the property that is the old nursing home.
It could if we needed it to. There is an existing driveway in the front that is, I will say, not in the best of conditions, but it could be improved, widened, et cetera, to meet any parking requirements. We did have Mr. Carroll over, along with Rick Riddicker, a couple of weeks ago. We measured the existing parking driveway that's in front of Gray's nursing home, and with the existing parking there, if we widen the parking, the driveway, excuse me, to the lot line, which I'm told we can do, we'll have no problem fitting comfortably in all the spaces necessary there for the units that we had put in, without having to make any other changes as far as having to have tenants park up next to that property and then walk through the backyard down along the retaining wall or anything like that.
So that's my first question. It looks like four units. And my next question is, underneath the nursing home, is the part that you want to make into a two-bedroom, does that have a basement?
It does have a basement. The basement will not be anything that's going to be have a bedroom done. It's going to be more or less for storage. There is an interior-exterior entrance to that basement that you can get to. Truth be told, I'm planning on living as an owner occupied in the two-bedroom section, so we'd probably use the downstairs storage for, downstairs basement for storage at this point. And then if any tenant looked to rent it down the road, it would be just additional storage space. We're not looking at doing any living down there.
But there's no basement underneath the new part as far as the nursing home?
The addition that was put on that went over the lot line is the section that has the basement. The front section, where we're proposing to put the one-bedroom units, is actually has a crawl space underneath it.
And my next question, you answered it in part. Why didn't you, why aren't you going with a two-bedroom and a three-bedroom? The City of Platteville is looking for affordable, single-family housing, and so my question is, why don't you have a three-bedroom setup instead of three one-bedrooms and then a two-bedroom that you want to live in?
Well, to answer that question, it's based on the inquiries that I get as managing my own properties in town. One-bedrooms and efficiency units are what I get the most hits on and seem to be something that's in the most need, whether it's from college professors that commute from Madison and just need a place to stay a couple places in the week, to young, single couples that are looking for something that's nice, not essentially apartment building, but is still affordable for them. A lot of times, the smaller two- to three-bedroom houses are outside of an affordability range for them, where the one-bedroom units, if they're done nicely, and we're not looking at doing high-end, but we're looking at doing something that is nice, wood floors, concrete countertops, et cetera, that is more ideal for them, and it actually puts it in a better price range than doing a two and a three. Three-bedrooms, honestly, are harder to rent. I don't know why. I can't give you a reason for that, but in my experience, I can rent a two-bedroom a whole lot easier than I can a three.
Our experience with one-bedroom apartments is that they usually wind up to be two people in an apartment, and then often they'll have two cars.
Well, that can happen.
So now you have a situation, if you have three one-bedrooms, you might wind up at five, six cars, just from those.
We could. I mean, I'm not saying that that wouldn't happen. Code requires one parking spot per bedroom, and if you've ever been down that street, other than the Gray's parking when it was there, the street relatively doesn't have a ton of parking on it. We're not looking at taking up the parking on the street as public parking for tenants to park in. That's why we're providing by code adequately what's needed on the street. You know, if a married couple decides to rent a unit, they have two cars, you know, they're going to have to figure that out without causing problems for the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I, I didn't say, one of the things that I have become concerned about, and maybe it's only because I came up the street tonight and I see garbage everywhere, do you, have you provided in your plan for appropriate refuse screened containers? Because these are, my understanding is, both the three and the four-bedroom unit, you will have to contract for garbage yourself. Triplexes and more, a duplex can be on city garbage, but is, am I not correct in saying that a threeplex is not a city garbage? So the question then becomes providing for adequate screening and garbage.
Well, we're in luck, because that's already all pre-existing there at the property.
Okay.
And at the end of the driveway, there's actually a very nice dog-eared fence that closes in a dumpster area, which we would just contact Faridies and rework how that agreement would work based on our needs.
Got a dumpster in there?
Yes, sir.
Now that some people don't, evidently, don't realize that three-bedroom, three-unit buildings also require a separate contract, that they aren't on city.
No, no, no. I have a building downtown. I'm well aware of that.
Okay.
And I'm not a big fan of the rollaways, because I think sometimes they're unsightly, so we'd look to do whatever we could to hide that from the neighborhood.
That's my only question.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next item would be public statements in favor. Don't have anyone else who's registered to speak about this ordinance, public statements against, or public statements in general. So we're back to council discussion. Any other comments?
I frankly think that this cleans up a potential, well, in many ways cleans up things that need to be cleaned up, from buildings being on lots they aren't supposed to be on, to a facility getting a use and not turning into a blighted area. So I, I think this is, it's always interesting when you go into the older parts of town.
It's very nice, actually, that the city provides citywide pickup and takes care of a lot of that. Kudos to the Faridies and also to, I know, we have staff from the city that's also been helping with that pickup today. I wouldn't want to be those guys at the end of the day. They must be exhausted. All right, if there's no further council discussion?
I just want to make sure we have off-street parking.
And?
Because I have student housing in front of me. There's only one spot in the complex. Everything else blocks me off, and, and I'm in a residential area, so I want to make real sure we have off-street parking. And is it going to be paved? Or maybe it's already paved. That's one of the things I want to make sure about.
All right. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
Who said the first motion?
Must have been Robin.
I do. I mean, I will. I'm motion.
No, it's already, did you make a motion to close a public hearing?
Uh-uh.
Who did that?
I have Stockhausen to close and Doss to second.
Okay.
There we go.
Sharp.
Yes.
Doss.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Francis.
Yes.
Stockhausen.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, is there a motion to approve the ordinance amending the zoning map for the planned unit development at 555 North Chestnut Street and 540 North Court Street?
I make a motion we adopt ordinance number 1806, amending the zoning map, which is part of the official zoning ordinance of the City of Platteville.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
Sharp.
Yes.
Doss.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Francis.
Yes.
Stockhausen.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Next, we'll go on to consideration the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to the routine nature or previous discussion. Please indicate to the council president if you would prefer a separate discussion in action. A is council minutes from our May 8, 18 regular meeting. B, payment of bills. C, appointments to boards and commissions. I do not have any this evening. D is licenses, change of agent for parking space LLC, temporary Class B, Class B licenses to serve wine for the Rotary Club Uncorked Downtown Wine Walk, temporary Class B retailer's license for serving fermented malt beverages for the Platteville J.C.'s at the Legion Field on the 4th of July. Also included is one-year and two-year operator licenses to sell and serve alcohol. And E is other permit, a bike ride for schools for Haiti on Saturday, June 16, starting at 10:00 a.m. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
Sharp.
Yes.
Doss.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Francis.
Yes.
Stockhausen.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is citizens' comments, observations, and petitions. We do have people who would like to speak on the ATV item, but we will call you up then. So the only person that has asked to speak under citizens' comments is Arlene Dorsey-Sis.
Arlene Dorsey-Sis, 130 North History Street here in Platteville. It's finally gotten nice today, and this is what we're all about. The Stone Cottage is coming up, and we're looking for people if they would like to help with the Stone Cottage. We're always looking for people, and we're going to have a meeting on the 24th, two days from now, and if anybody would like to, we'll be meeting here in the Stone Cottage. If you, I mean, not, no, I mean, here. We'll be meeting down here and stuff. We do need people, because the Stone Cottage is one fantastic thing, if any of you know about it. But we are moving forward all the time and trying to look for new ideas and things, and so this is what we're talking about. And we do have this down below. I'll pass this around to you guys and stuff. So we're ready to start. Finally, it's warm enough that we can do stuff. Questions? Probably not. Just get out of here, thanks.
Thank you. All right, next, in the packet, we have reports. Historic Preservation Commission, Killian, anything to add?
No additions.
I have a question.
Yes.
Can I, I noticed in the past few meetings, there's a lot of talk of Indian Park. Can you give us some more specifics about those talks?
Indian Park, well, we have a group, two, three people, that are investigating the presence as far as bodies at Indian Park, and it looks like it may be a cemetery. We're not for certain yet, so that is the unknown yet. A letter has come from the State Historical Society stating that they can't say one way or the other, whether it should be designated as a park or whether it should be designated as a cemetery, but the local volunteers are working more on it, and there's further information coming.
Thanks.
They're very enthusiastic for the work to do.
All right, Library Board, Nichols and Klein, I don't have anything to add.
I attended my first meeting. It was kind of a conversation of policies on discipline and some issues that were kind of coming up with greater numbers of attendance and activity within the library, so good problems to have, I guess, so.
Police and Fire Commission, Francis.
Nothing to add?
All right, we're on to our action items. The first is post-issuance compliance policy for tax exempt and tax advantaged obligations.
So the IRS has rules relating to the issuance of tax-exempt bonds, which would be most of the bonds that we issue as a city. We comply with these procedures, and we engage with ALIS as our dissemination agent for continuing disclosure, but best practice calls for us to have an actual policy that lays out the procedures to be followed for the compliance officer. So this, this policy is to, is to lay out those procedures and show that we are following the criteria to comply with the IRS rules.
Questions, anyone?
I have a couple of questions. Is this a one-time adoption that the city does, and say later there'll be some updates as we go along? Is that the procedure here?
I'm not anticipating any updates, except for if the IRS were to change something related to geo-obligations, and then in which case our municipal advisor and our bond council would let us know that we needed to update the policy.
So this, this has come to us from the, from whom? You told me that.
Yeah, we have bond council, and that's Qualz and Brady. They actually drafted the policy, and it was provided to us through our, through our municipal advisor, ALIS.
So it's, so it's, is it basically a boilerplate document?
Yes, it's a boilerplate.
Okay. And I did have another question. It's on, it relates to pages six and 10. So if you look at page six and you look at page 10, it talks about, on page six, record retention, it talks about E. It says, "Keeping all materials for so long as the issue is outstanding, comma, plus seven years." And then, when I looked at H on page 10, it says, "For the period that the related bonds or notes are outstanding," but it doesn't say anything about plus seven years. What's the difference there? In other words, it's?
I see what you're saying. I'm just.
Is that something left out?
I don't think so.
Well, they're, they're different as far as record of retention.
I think one is related to the actual obligations issued, and the other is related to continuing disclosure. It's a subsection of continuing disclosure. So the documentation being referenced on page 10 is the annual reviews versus the actual obligations themselves. The material records in E are relating to the actual obligation, so I believe that's the difference between the two.
So the reviews, you can throw away right away?
Well, the reviews are to be retained as long as the bonds or notes are outstanding.
But then after that, you can throw them away?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions, anyone? Then is there a motion?
I make a motion that we adopt the post-issuance compliance policy, three dash fourteen for tax exempt and tax advantaged obligations and continuing disclosure.
Second.
A motion and a second, we'll vote.
Sharp.
Yes.
Doss.
Yes.
Klein.
Yes.
Francis.
Yes.
Stockhausen.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item, budget administration update to the financial management policy.
Staff is recommending the addition of some language in our financial management policy to cover and address how the budget is administered during the course of the budget year. This language begins on page two, and you can see there that it explains how the budget is to be overseen, and then the methodology for making changes to the budget. You can see on page three, there is a table that identifies the functional expenditure categories and then the departments within those categories. And on page four, there is a, a table which demonstrates the different layers of authority for certain changes to the budget. You can see that within a department, if there's a change between line items requested, the administration director has authority to approve such a change. If the changes between departments within a functional expenditure category, that would need city manager approval. And if the transfer was to be between functional expenditure categories, that would require common council approval. That, those would all be for within the general fund. And then for other funds, if it's a transfer between line items within the fund, city manager can approve. If it's a transfer between funds, then it requires common council approval. There's also some language there addressing the regular full-time, part-time positions as well as temporary seasonal and less than twenty hour week part-time. Is there any questions on any of the budget administration language?
Question, anyone?
Does it seem like anything is changing? This is just kind of common practice and we're outlining it?
Yes, it is best practice. We did do some research on what other municipalities do. We also resourced our auditors for their review and for the policy. And it does, it does comply with state statutes related to making changes to municipal budgets. Most of all, it just provides clarity so that we're all on the same page as to how we do this.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion to approve this?
I move to approve the city of Platteville's financial management plan policy as presented.
Okay.
Motion and a second and we'll vote.
Sharp?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is the Armory Land Division, Joe.
Yes, thank you. National Guard at this point no longer uses the armory for National Guard purposes other than as a spot for their recruiter. They're not sure how much longer that will remain on the site as well. So they're kind of going through the initial steps to prepare for selling or otherwise disposing of that property. So they're kind of going through their checklist. I'm not sure when or how exactly that will happen, but they're starting that process. And one item they would like to address is the, the fact that the city's water booster station is located on that property. Right now, it's there via an easement that allows that to be there. But from a sales standpoint, it would be a little cleaner if that was totally removed from their property. So they're proposing a certified survey map to put the booster station on a separate parcel than the remaining armory property. Right now, the, the easement is a one hundred by eighty foot description. The proposed CSM is actually creating a parcel that's a hundred and ten by eighty. It was enlarged a little bit to make sure that it contained the fire hydrant and other facilities that the city does have on that, that property. So as proposed, the one hundred and ten by eighty would basically remove all of the city's facilities from that property. So the proposal does meet the requirements of zoning and subdivision ordinances and solves the purpose. So staff would recommend approval. Any questions?
I have a question on this, but I, I, you said this will be a certified survey map for this piece, the hundred and ten by eighty. Are they, I mean, have they determined the lot lines otherwise on their property?
The, the lot lines, as they sit otherwise, are already established. So there would be no changes to those.
Because on the, on the map that we have, we don't see those lot lines, is that correct?
It's on the, it's on the certified survey map. It'd be lot one and then the city's parcel would be lot two.
It, it's not on the overhead map that we have?
Oh, probably not.
Yeah, I see them on that CSM.
Any other questions? All right, is there a motion to approve this request?
I move to approve the land division that separates the land that contains the city's water booster station and hydrant from the remaining National Guard Armory property.
Second, the motion.
That includes recording of a certified map, right? Certified survey map, okay. All right, we have a motion and a second, we'll vote.
Sharp?
Yes.
Dos? Klein?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is resolution eighteen fifteen, naming the Platteville to Belmont Trail.
Yes. DNR would like a resolution from its three local partners, which are the city of Platteville, Grant County, and Lafayette County regarding the recently completed trail between Platteville and Belmont. One of the suggestions that they came up with, that people came up with is to name it the Mount View State Trail. Staff approached the Platteville Community Arboretum and the Moving Platteville Outdoor Steering Group, who helped with the city's trail and see if they had any issues or concerns regarding this. And there was no, no concerns. They, they thought that that was appropriate. So this would start where our trail goes on to the DNR easement just off of Mineral Street and continue on the DNR easement from there and continue on the trail all the way to Belmont. And so move that we approve recommending this name.
Any comments or questions? Is there a motion?
I move to approve resolution eighteen fifteen, recommending that the Natural Resources Board name the Platteville to Belmont Trail as the Mount View State Trail.
Second.
Motion and a second and we'll vote.
Sharp?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is mortgage adjustment for city and RDA loan, twenty-five East Main.
Yes, back in two thousand and fifteen, the RDA and the city both approved providing loans to the property at twenty-five East Main Street to assist with the renovation of that property and essentially improvement of the property, converting it from a three-unit apartment building and commercial space to a five-unit apartment building and commercial space. The project has begun, but it is not done yet. And due to some unexpected expenses and some cost overruns, the applicant is in need of some additional funds to complete that project. They have been in contact with a, a bank that is interested in doing the loan for the additional funds. So they're not actually asking for additional funds from the city or the RDA. But what they're asking for is the, the, there's currently a, a private mortgage that's in first position ahead of the city and RDA's loans. So that mortgage would, and debt would be refinancing and the, the amount of that loan would be increased from, I think it's sixty-eight thousand, so a little bit less than that now, to three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So in order for that to happen, the city and the RDA would have to agree to subordinate our loans to the increased value of the additional, or the additional value of the private mortgage in front of us. So it's not additional funding that's being requested of us, but it does put the city further behind as far as the value in front of us from a security standpoint. So the proposed mortgage, as I said, would be increased to three hundred and twenty thousand dollars in front of our values. The RDA did review this at their meeting last week and recommended approval on their part. The council would also have to approve this. There is some additional information that I put on your desk this evening as far as the appraisal. There was an updated appraisal and the applicant did get a commitment letter from a, a bank as far as the financing. The applicant is here this evening, she can talk about that in more detail. Any question?
Questions, anyone?
I'm just trying to wrap my head around it a little bit. So we're losing money off of this loan when it gets refinanced, right? Is that what?
No, basically, it's, it's from a security standpoint.
What does that mean?
Since if theoretically the, the project failed and it was repossessed, the, and it was sold, whatever, the, the value of the, the debt that's in front of us would get paid first, the first mortgage. So if there isn't enough value to pay off that mortgage plus ours, we would be behind it. We would be the ones that would lose money.
Like if it was bankrupt or whatever, it just fell through.
So it's basically putting our loans in a less secure position. But the amount of our loans would not change, the payment on our loans would not change. It's a security standpoint is the issue.
My understanding is that part of this issue relates to the fact that there were historic tax credits that either couldn't be or weren't sold.
Right, that, that's part of it is they didn't get the income coming in from the tax credits. And then there were some code issues with the sprinkler system and some other items that were not expected when they did their initial budgeting.
I, I, as a past member of the RDA and not a current member, recall that in the initial discussion of this, the RDA suggested that a part of this motion also include that if and when the historic tax credits on this property were sold, if they ever are sold, that the money from that sale be directed to reduce the debt on this particular property. Was that it?
I was gonna say, yes, I, I do recall the RDA having that discussion.
You do or don't?
I do, yes.
I would be in favor of including that as part of any motion.
Anybody else have any comments? Any response from the applicant, if you want to come up to the microphone? Please give your name and address.
Judy Wall and my address is one oh nine East Blackhawk Avenue, Prairie du Sheen, Wisconsin. The, the state tax credits were able to be sold. The federal tax credits, because it was such a small amount, it came to a hundred and seventeen thousand and they have many more restrictions on them, we were not able to sell them. If you had a larger amount, say five hundred thousand or more, there may be some buyers in it because the buyers have to have a, a percentage of ownership for, on the property for a five-year period. So we're not planning at this point to sell the federal tax credits. We will probably use some of them internally, but that's not an income generator.
But you would have no issue with including that in a motion? That if the, if and when the federal tax credits are sold, any proceeds from that sale, since it was, since they were allocated for this project, should then be used to reduce the debt on this project?
I, I do not have an issue with that because we have no intention, we have no buyer. And the state tax credits will be, you know, finally certified before the end of this year. So there would be even less of an opportunity for the federal after, after August.
And the proceeds from the state tax credit sale are going to this project, correct?
Yes, that's correct, yeah. Are there any other questions? I just kind of wanted to clarify that. The other issues that we had, in addition to not being able to sell a hundred and seventeen thousand of the federal credits, we had approximately a hundred and forty-three thousand of state code imposed restrictions on the building, an extensive iron firescape down the back, a sprinkler alarm system, a rooftop exit, and a penthouse. So those are the other budget items that the state required us to construct. And so we're looking at the first mortgage of sixty thousand, a hundred and forty-three thousand of budget items from the state building inspector and then a hundred and seventeen thousand in the tax credits that we weren't able to sell. And that, those three items total three twenty, which would be the new amount of the first mortgage, so.
Any other questions for the owner?
Just to say thank you, Judy, for the appraisal. I know that, again, when I, prior to, when I was on the RDA, we had asked for that, so thank you.
Yeah, no problem. I didn't have a problem with the appraisal, it just cost me a month of construction, which is the way things go, so.
Thank you. All right. So the request is the mortgage adjustment for the property. So motion to approve or deny the request to subordinate the city's loan for the property at twenty-five East Main to a private first mortgage in the amount of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
I move that we approve the request to subordinate the city's loan for the property at twenty-five East Main to a private first mortgage in the amount of three hundred and twenty fi, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And in the event that the federal tax credits are sold, to require that the proceeds from that sale be directed to reduce the outstanding debt on this or outstanding obligations on this property.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Move vote.
Sharp?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Klein?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, that's it for action items. We'll go on to information and discussion. The first is resolution for the lead service line agreement. Howard?
Yes. We were successful in getting two grants for the lead service line. Year one was three hundred thousand plus ten thousand towards daycares. And then the second year is two hundred thousand. So what we're asking now is to approve the resolution for the second loan.
Any questions on that?
It's a, it's called a loan, but it's really a grant, right?
The, the technical term is principal forgiveness loan, which means that it's a loan until we do everything that they tell us to and then they forgive us paying back the principal, which for most people is called a grant.
Any other questions? All right, then we're on to the ATV, UTV ordinance and route designation.
City staff has been meeting with a number of ATV, UTV enthusiasts, many of whom are here tonight on the topic of potentially developing or designating some ATV, UTV routes through the city. These routes would potentially provide connectivity to township and county highway roads that currently allow for ATV, UTV traffic. As part of this, the ATV enthusiasts, in conjunction with city staff, identified their preferred routes. And I think a map has been provided to city council members. Along with that, a draft ordinance was developed. This draft ordinance was developed with, by looking at other cities. There aren't many of a comparable size that have ATV, UTV routes. In Wisconsin, I was only able to find Merrill and Monroe. But I was in contact with the police chief in Lancaster where they have them and I looked at the ordinances in a number of other cities. Reidsburg, again Lancaster, Darlington, Monroe. It's, with that in mind, many of the things that we felt were important for, to make this a, a workable project in the city have been incorporated into this draft ordinance. Beyond that, I think that there are a number of people here that would like to address this topic on behalf of the ATV, UTV enthusiasts.
You have a number of people who, well, used to speak or registered in one way or another, so we will, I think, start with the folks that would like to say something, and that might open up questions that the council might have. So, start first, I'd like to speak in favor, Jim Schneller. Your name and address, please.
Good evening, Jim Schneller, six twenty Ridge Avenue. You're starting with one of the, with the least knowledge, so it can only go up from here. Basically, just a couple of points that I would like to make in favor of this. If you take a look at the UTV ATV usage in Wisconsin, it has grown significantly. There's nearly four hundred thousand units now. And there's definite cases where you can see the economic, positive economic impact in cities. Take every examples like Darlington, Belmont, Monroe, Lancaster, Lafayette County, I believe. And I think Isaac will probably be much better on the figures, but they're up by eleven percent over, over the previous year. A significant amount, which has been attributed to the opening of use of roads and so forth for UTVs and ATVs. If you take a look at the businesses that would be supported, while it may not create manufacturing or other types of things, what it will do in Platteville is increase business to the local businesses, gas stations, restaurants, and so forth. So, you'll also, and I'm sure you've already got it, that the PCA board and the chamber have supported those. So, and the police chief is making sure that, you know, responsible usage of these things in town. And it connects, it connects the rest of the county. So, my support of this, and I'm one of these in this last couple of years that, prior to Mr. Digman telling me what a ranger was, which wasn't a guy in a forest with a funny hat, I had no idea what it is, and now, we play on those. So, it's good, it's good entertainment, it's good fun, and i-if there are rules in place to make it responsible, it's good for the community and the county, so, thank you.
Thank you. Next, asking to speak in favor, Isaac Shanley.
I'm Isaac Shanley, I live at ten thirty Seamer Street. So, I'm actually gonna pass off some a little bit more information to you that I don't think was given to you in your packet. So, one of the reasons I proposed the city with, along with the township people, as some other people doing this, is, as Mr. Schneller said, you know, this is a growing activity in the state of Wisconsin. And not only for personal use, but just for business-wise. I currently don't own one right now, I have in the past, I do have another one coming. So, that is another reason we have it going. But, as you'll see in the information that I've handed out to you, as Mr. Schneller said, you know, the Chamber of Commerce was in favor of this. Sorry, it's not signed, I thought Kathy was gonna be here, but she wasn't able to make it. PCA board, you know, they've approved it on their, on their part, they see how important it is. We worked with them on the trail, they're gonna work with us on this. And then, a couple of the other things for the signage-wise, in case you have any questions as what the signs look like as for the sign, excuse me, what they look like as for the size, there's a couple of pages on there as well. So, it will be heavily signed from entrance to the end, turn signs, dual signs, stop signs, and that'll all be paid for privately, it won't cost the city a cent to buy those signs. So, the only thing that we've agreed with the city is that the city would install them so that they can have them where they want to. But, there are DNR and DOT guidelines as where those signs have to go. I haven't given those to Howard yet, he can look them online, or I can hand those to him, but, you know, we'll have to follow those as well. And as for the routes that we chose, I think there's approximately five routes through the city which you chose, that is actually less than eight percent of the city streets that we have here. I think it's about seven and a half percent. Out of all those routes, there are five gas stations, four which are convenience stores, excuse me, convenience centers, three hotels. I think it's eleven or twelve restaurants right on the trail. And then, there's approximately four to five restaurants that are within one block of the trail system, as well as a whole bunch of other businesses too. I couldn't see another way of giving businesses free money, if you take it that way. It's not gonna cost them any advertising, nothing towards their taxes, it's just, it's just an increase in revenue for them, hopefully. You know, we've worked with the chief police on the hours, when they're open, when they're closing down, and the other rules. And as I've also included in what I just handed you, is also the most recent Grant County, the Grant County ordinances, what they've passed. So, what we're proposing actually is stricter than what they have by hours-wise and closing down. Grant County doesn't close down at all throughout the season, where we're, we're stating that we're agreeing that we would close down from December first to March fifteenth. They're open from, or excuse me, they're only closed from one AM till five AM, where we're saying we'll close from eleven PM to six AM. And I can understand the reasons why, that's one of the reasons why we agreed to it, so. As for the numbers that we have, as Mr. Schneller said, I gave him the numbers there. The, from last year, or two thousand sixteen to two thousand seventeen, there's a four percent increase in numbers of registered ATV slash UTVs in the state of Wisconsin. Now, that number does not include the out-of-state annual passes. So, if you do not live in the state of Wisconsin, you have to have an annual pass or a five-day pass to ride, to ride in Wisconsin. The out-of-state annual pass actually has increased ten percent over last year, and the five-day pass was a five percent increase, so. What was just announced last night through the Grant County Herald Independent is Lancaster, Wisconsin only has, I think, two or three routes. They're actually looking into, actually proposing to open all their streets. They've not had any negative reason to close it, they're actually looking to expand their routes to get to more businesses. You know, if you look through all this stuff, every register, every machine that's on the street has to be registered through the state. There's a registration fee, it's thirty dollars, plus you pay the five and a half percent sales tax. You know, some of these average out to twenty thousand dollar machines, so you're looking, you know, eleven hundred dollars in sales tax, so it's, it's a big revenue. As for, and we're not even talking for the, for the private sector and the business-wise, but for the, for the public, we've got the campground over here on Mountview Park. If you go to any of these other cities or municipalities that have a campground on the trail, there's times you have to get there on a Wednesday just to get a spot for the weekend. I've driven by our campground the last three weekends in a row, there's been one camper there every weekend, that's all there's been. So, I see this being a big benefit for the usage of the campground as well. Any questions at all?
I'd like to ask questions about the routes.
Sure.
Let's start with B, how much can you go on B?
Right now, on County B?
You know, if, when, if this is passed, how much can you go on B?
Well, as of right now, coming into Platteville from County B, from Sabatozzi, the route goes to the city limits. If you're coming from Lafayette County, it stops at Grant County on County B, so we'll be able to go all the way through. Platteville Township, Lima Township, some of the other townships in the area have not opened up more routes, or signed more routes. All their, like, Platteville Township, all the roads are open for, for trails once they're signed. They've not signed them because they're waiting for the city of Platteville to do something, because they don't want to spend money on signs to have dead ends, and then, have to take their signs down and possibly go somewhere else.
And D, D south would be a route to?
It's a county road, D, it's a county road, yep.
And how about eighty, eighty-one north?
Eighty-one north, that's to Lancaster. So, to Lancaster, we would turn on Old Lancaster Road. So, we would head out past Von Glan's.
They'd have to cross at Old Lancaster, at eighty-one to go on some township road, is that right?
They would come north of Platteville, say by Von Glan's Auto Sales, and you would take a left on Old Lancaster Road, yep. There's about three hundred and thirty or three hundred and fifty feet of city street before it turns into township.
They'd have to turn at Banner Road.
Correct.
Okay.
And that would, that would actually take you into the, more of the Lima Township, which, again, they're not putting any signs up because they don't want to, again, expense of the, of the signs and the manpower to do it until they know they're actually gonna have a route to go to.
And then, let's see, eighty-one south, they couldn't be allowed on eighty-one south?
So, the, the map that you have from the city there that's in green, those are the routes that we proposed, and those are the only routes that we want to have. So, you know, you could not do eighty-one south of Platteville, it would be County D only to go out of town from the south.
And they can't go on anything? Well, what's the speed that they can go on the road throughout in the country, they can go as fast as they want?
No, they can't, actually.
As far as the speed limit?
Even, even in the country, they have, they still have to follow a speed limit, whether it be fifty-five, or if, say, that particular township has posted it, it will say thirty-five, they have to follow thirty-five miles an hour. So, they, the UTV or ATV has to follow every rule that a car or truck does, or motorcycle.
So, do they have turn signals?
Some do do, some do not. It's getting more popular to put them on there.
It could be required in the city?
Hand signals be acceptable?
What's that?
Or would they use hand signals?
If they do not have turn signals, they use hand signals, yep.
I have a whole bunch of questions about safety stuff.
Okay.
So, are helmets required?
What's that?
Are helmets required on these things?
Anybody underneath, underneath the age of eighteen has to have a DOT-approved helmet on, yes.
Why not people over eighteen?
You don't have to on a motorcycle, so.
Could we put it in the ordinance that if we wanted it in this town, that they would have to have a helmet on?
I would strongly recommend it.
And then, my other question is, what's the minimum age you can be on, like, a passenger, either on the ATV or the ranger?
All right, so, on an ATV, you can be a passenger anytime.
So, like, my two-year-old could go on there?
Correct, but they would have to be in a seatbelt, which is...
And the ATV?
Oh, no, not an ATV, no, I'm sorry, but a UTV.
Okay.
So, yep, but they would have to have, have the DOT helmet on as well.
What about car seat? Is that a thing?
No.
Okay, and then, the ATV, what's the youngest you have to be?
As for when you can be on one?
Yeah.
On an ATV, actually, that is actually a parental's choice.
So, could we put regulations in with all that also?
You can, I highly recommend not going any strictly with the state of Wisconsin, the DOT and the DNR have. And one critical reason is, you're gonna get people that may not come to this area just because of that. We're trying to, we're trying to match all the other codes in the area, so.
Right.
What's the youngest age you can drive?
Sixteen, but also, taking note of this, it's in your packet, you can be thirty years old as of today, have a driver's license. Unless you've passed the ATV, UTV safety course, you can't drive one, so.
You have to be sixteen with a driver's license too?
Yep, you have to be, you have to have a driver's license to drive one on, on roads.
Okay.
As well as have the safety course.
How about parking, where are we gonna park all these ATVs when they go up to the restaurants?
Just like you do a car.
Right.
Some cars are eighteen to twenty feet long, most UTVs are under twelve feet long.
Okay.
If we're talking safety, you know, a seatbelt is ten dollars in a vehicle, it's two hundred dollars and fifty cents in a UTV.
Okay.
So, there's a lot of, there's a lot of times where it's more expensive to get caught, not, or not doing something legally than what you are in a vehicle.
I've had a couple of concerned citizens sending me emails about making sure that the roads stay safe, and how, you know, there's more deaths and all that stuff, so I wanna, you know, I don't want to bring death to Platteville. I'm not, you know, I know, and you don't either, I know that. I'm just trying to make sure that we're considering everything.
You know, the first car was built in eighteen eighty-six, you're still getting tickets every day in a car, so.
Oh, totally, no, I, I get it, I'm just making sure.
I think the concerns that we'll hear most is, is, is it noisy, is it?
You can park a UTV from the factory right next to a, we'll say, an F-150 or any half-ton or three-quarter-ton truck, start them up side by side, you won't know which one's running. There is a, there is a decimal where they cannot go over for loudness, just like a vehicle. The, this DOT and the DNR state that, so, and all the ones from the factory, you know, meet those codes. Obviously, people can do, just like they do in a vehicle, or, you know, Harley-Davidson, they change the exhaust. You will not get, you will not get one UTV that's any louder than, you know, modified Harley going down the road, so.
But, you could have a group of ten or more of them all coming into town at the same time?
You can do the same thing with ten to twenty Harleys, so, yes, you can, yep.
And then, along with that, the other questions would be, like, it's a, it's a group activity, right? And they're recreating together oftentimes, so they may be going from one restaurant or one bar to another, so that increases the chance that we have drunk driving on our streets, possibly, right? So, I'm, I'm just asking for the counter.
No, I would agree with that comment, but I'd also agree with the same thing if you have a organized motorcycle ride, or if you have a car cruise. You know, they're, they're almost the same things that you're doing with a car or motorcycle, anything like that, so.
Notice that many of these routes are actually on the state highway?
Yep.
So, are this, I mean, it seems to, so are there different regulations for state highways as for other roads?
Yep, Act eighty-seven, which, which was just passed by the state last year, it's called Act eighty-seven, allows you to ride on any state highway as long as the speed limit is thirty-five miles or under.
But, they would have to abide by the speed limit?
Correct.
And is it the city's prerogative to establish the fine, or are the fines established by state statute for?
That is already in your packet, in there?
By knowledge, the fine amounts are established by the state, and then, we have adopted those amounts with state statute twenty-two, or twenty-three dot thirty-three.
My biggest concern is, as you know, I'm on the corner of Chestnut Street and Business one fifty-one. The trucks and the cars and the agricultural equipment is coming down at about fifty-five to sixty miles an hour.
They should be ticketed.
But, I don't think our police have enough time, or the sheriff's department.
Right, do we have enough resources to support the additional traffic on the road for the police station? I mean, like, so, do you guys have?
Police can't come on that section, if you look at your, that's sheriff area.
Got it, okay. But, I mean, would that be a problem?
In terms of increased traffic with ATV, UTV?
Uh-huh.
I don't anticipate that it's going to be burdensome.
Right, that was my question.
Well, just takes the first accident and things will slow down. That's only my concern, is I watch the traffic and it's really moving. And I can see them coming in on Highway D, going north.
Correct.
So, it's just my concern.
But, they can't come in on Highway D down through town. According to this map, the only way into town is on Business Highway one fifty-one, isn't it?
But, that's D, and if you look at the blue line, you're getting the city. But, D comes to the edge of that green line, and then, it flips off into Chestnut Street.
So, the routes that you're seeing on there are the only of the routes that would be located within the city of Platteville. So, the map that's on there, Howard has outlined as to what the city controls for city streets. So, if you were to take Business Highway one fifty-one, which would go out to County D, it would expand past the, we'll say, the boundary line, and then, go to County, County D, and then, over the overpass. The next...
But, it would not come in Chestnut Street?
No, it would follow Business one fifty-one. The next route out of town to the west would be County B. The one to the north would be Lancaster Street. The next one to the north over would be Second Road. The next one to the northeast would be, and the last one would be County B, as you're heading out towards the Big M.
The only reason I bring it up is because, if you look at the map, Highway D technically is right on the edge of the city limits, and which, the hill then, which actually is going north, but you're going downhill, is very demanding on the traffic.
Correct.
And it should be fifty-five going to forty, and I've never seen a person go from fifty-five to forty on that hill. So, for the safety purposes, I think you're gonna have to spread the word, that's a dangerous hill.
So, we've chosen that route for a couple of reasons, so eighty heading south of town is too fast to be on a, for out-of-state highway as well. Like, if you're heading out towards Wagon's Appliance or the Old Farm and Fleet. And then, we do not want them, as you see on the route, we do not want them past a Culvers out towards Eastside Road, et cetera. Personally, as I said, I've owned one before, another one coming, I just, in my mind, couldn't send anybody out that direction because of all the, all the commercial driveways, the traffic going out there. So, we're talking with the DOT and the DNR, that is one of the, so we can get people coming in from the south side of town, which would bring Keeler, Cuba City, which is a high-traffic area for those, or for the UTVs. That is a route that everybody chose to be the safest out of all of them, so.
And then, my other, you know, you live on Seamer Street, and so do I. Pitt Street, Solvia Street, and what's the other one, Cross One, Second Street?
Yep.
They're all high-use areas in the summer because of soccer games, ballgames. It's a narrow street, lot of kids, do your people know that?
Yep.
Do they know they're gonna have to drive?
Fifty miles an hour, starting next Sunday, or excuse me, next Monday till Labor Day, yep. Fifty miles an hour, starting next Sunday, or excuse me, next Monday till Labor Day, yep.
Okay, great. Because I have a real fear, the kids are just moving very quickly through that area. I'm sure you witnessed that.
Yep.
Okay.
Means actually, these are kind of a different than a vehicle coming out. When you're sitting on a sidewalk, if you're at somewhere, you actually notice these type of machines coming before you do a car. Because they're, you know, they are different. I mean, they're, you know, they're not a vehicle, there's something that's newer, they're starting to come out. So people seem to pay attention and see these, like, well, that's not a car coming around the road. So they actually look to see or notice these before they do see an actual vehicle because they are something different. You know, you see a tractor or combine, something coming down before you do a car for the same purpose, and so.
Did you make this map?
What's that?
Did you make this map?
Uh, kind of in conjunction with Howard, um, Karen and with, um, uh, the chief of police. So the map itself actually came from, um, Howard. And then we working together proposed the routes.
Uh, was the community safe routes committee advised at all?
I'd have to ask the chief man.
Were the, was the school district consulted?
I did not.
Two schools?
I did not reach out to them. We did share the information with the university.
The response?
Limited.
What does that mean?
I was expecting more feedback from the chief of police at the university and he did not have much input on it.
So we really don't have enough input from the university?
I have also shared it with Eric Fleming, our, our liaison, uh, to the chancellor's office. Um, and so I know that he's forwarded it on, um.
Driven.
But we have not heard anything. We're happy to reach out to any groups that you see appropriate for additional input.
I posed, uh, several questions, uh, to Karen, um, and, um, didn't, didn't necessarily share those with council. Um, popu- the population here is eleven thousand, uh, or ten if you wanna, whatever, it's over ten. I would like to know if, uh, the other communities in the state that are our size that have, um, done this, A T V, U T V routes. Uh, I'm particularly interested in other university towns that have adopted this. I, I think we have a, kind of an extra, um, population. Uh, so that's one question I had. Uh, another dealt with the state highways. Uh, the third one, uh, the routes proposed, uh, actually take all the traffic through downtown on Main Street, on Furnace Street and on Pine Street. Um, I'm concerned about, number one, the speed on Main Street, which is supposed to be fifteen miles an hour and rarely is. Um, so I'm concerned about speed. I'm also incre- always we get this business about, it's hard to cross Main Street from second, from, uh, fourth because of, so I have some, uh, con- concern about, uh, cross traffic on Main Street. I also have some concern about pedestrian crossings on Main Street. Our laws are you have to stop for pedestrians, so I have that concern. Uh, Karen has already, uh, noted that we can specify hours of operation. Um, those were some of the initial questions I was asked by others. And I expect, oh, the other, the other question I would have is, has there been a formal written survey of Main Street businesses? Are they aware? Have they been informed in writing and surveyed in writing? Have you gotten responses in writing?
Barb, in answer to that question, um, Jack Ludke has asked to speak for information, so he may be able to answer some of your questions. So do you have any other questions or comments too?
That's what I have right now.
Okay.
Oh, I, I also have a question about, um, we talked about the signage. Who's prepared to pay for the signage and to install the signage?
So the U T V or an A T V club plus donations will take care of all the signage.
And its installation?
The installation, and this was actually at Howard's discretion, they want to install the signs.
But you would reimburse for installation?
That was never brought up, so. But for actually paying of the signs, we, that it won't cost the taxpayers one dollar.
And then you would do replacement signs?
We all have, also have signs on hand, so if one were to get damaged, they don't have to wait a month. They could go to the, the warehouse wherever and grab a sign that they need. There would be, you know, ten percent over, whatever, whatever required to be on hand. The signs would be at, and they would be at the city or shop, not at ours, they could just go grab them when they need them.
And you mentioned that there's a licensing, uh, for A T Vs and U T Vs.
Yep.
And I'm assuming that all the revenue of that license goes to the state? Or does some of it get funneled back to?
Uh, goes all to the state and to the D N R. So every machine that is purchased has to have two registration stickers, one on each side. And then they also have to have a license plate on the back of the machine as well, so that.
If they're gonna be on the road?
If they're gonna be on the road, yep.
Right, because I own a eight, I, I, I own one, mine doesn't have to have a license.
So that anybody that needs, you know, wants to pull more, can see him, has, you know, can see what they are. But as far as I know, the thirty dollars all goes to the state and to that, so.
And so in terms of, well, well, I think Dan mentioned the question about safe routes and stuff. I would like to see those people, uh, surveyed or at least informed.
With the routes that we've kind of chosen is, other than, you know, like I say, Seamer Street where I live, but we use that as for connectivity of the north side of town on two spots. These are the routes to keep them out of the neighborhoods, so you're not going into the schools, you're not going into the, you know, to the neighborhoods themselves. Say like Preston Drive or down like where the stockouts of down on K Street, et cetera, you're staying out of those. You're already staying on the highway or a road that has already got the traffic and not adding additional traffic to other roads. Some municipalities have a unwritten rule that, and we do not want this, have a rule that if you do not live on the trail, you are allowed to take the most direct route from your property to get to that trail. We're not asking for that. We want, if you're out on the trail, get a ticket. You know, if any of these people or anybody sees concern, somebody speeding, somebody being out after hours or when you're closed, call the police department, get a ticket, so.
I also know there are communities, because I work in one at least three or four times a week, or three or four times a month, that ban, that don't allow A T Vs and U T Vs on their main street in downtowns.
Now, as we see.
A T V trail stops here, I've seen these signs.
Correct. The ones that we've looked at and spoken with, with the businesses, you know, we're trying to create more revenue and business for the businesses in town as well as us being able to get from one side of town to the other. Um, if you don't take it to those businesses, they're not gonna get it, so. Um, like I said, it's, it's, I wouldn't say free money, but it's not costing them any money, you know, for advertising, additional signage, et cetera. So I couldn't ask for, you know, if I was a business owner on Main Street, you couldn't ask for a better way to generate revenue is to have additional people come and buy your business.
Like revenue through alcohol sales.
What's that?
Like revenue through alcohol sales.
Restaurants, hotels, gas stations. Everything I'm, you know, some of these questions, I understand, you understand, you're looking at the most negative things of these, of these units. But as I said, they're, they're, other than being licensed as a car, they're almost like a vehicle. So what you're, you're saying, everything, like right now, there's somebody speeding in the city of Platteville. Right now, there's somebody not wearing their seatbelt, and that's in, that's in a licensed vehicle, so.
Chief, do you need a valid driver license to use an A T V, U T V?
As Isaac explained, if you're about thirty or under, you have to take the online course. And then you also need to be, what, sixteen and have a, a driver's license.
So if we were to establish A T V, U T V routes in the city, if I, um, decided that I wanted to buy myself an A T V or U T V and drive it around in place of my car, once these routes are established, I could do that?
On the routes as established.
On the route as established, okay, so it, I, the reason I ask that really, Isaac, is because I think of this as kind of a group activity. But I'm wondering about people who might decide that it's an easier way to get around town. You know, some people use a bicycle, some people use a car, and now maybe we have U T Vs that are going around town. Now, if we designate certain routes, it makes it a little more difficult. But as you just noted, it would be going down to the restaurants and to the gas stations and things like that, so. Uh, that's just something, honestly, that I just thought of.
But I'm not gonna say that's not gonna happen, you know, it, it does happen, but it's not, you know, it's not a case where, I mean, I know a lot of people that have these. It's not like where they come home at five o'clock, park their vehicle, we're gonna hop in that, take that to, we'll say, well, they can't get to Walmart, but we'll say, we'll go down to the Quick Trip, whatever, they don't do that, you know, so. And this isn't something that you're gonna see seven days a week, you're gonna see, you know, five of these, two of these coming through town. This is more or less gonna be, um, you know, Friday afternoon, Saturday and then some Sundays, so. You know, it wouldn't surprise me in a couple of weeks in a row, from Monday till Thursday, you don't even see one, you know, it's, so. Um, I've been in multiple rides, I've been to multiple different cities that do these, and, uh, um, I was on a ride probably a month ago. Four hundred and twenty-five registered people with two hundred some machines themselves. The entire, it covered two different counties, I'm not even sure how many different towns we went to. Um, the entire day with all those machines, all the, um, there were six tickets given out and they were all for people that were on a route that wasn't marked. And I'm not saying they didn't miss a sign because it's, you know, they, as you're following the speed limit, you may have just missed, because these signs are smaller. Um, or they didn't know, but I'm sure there was a couple of that, they were, they knew where they were at and just followed it. But, you know, they are ticketed heavily, so.
Okay, I have a couple of questions about, excuse me, uh, sound. Um, do you know at all, say at thirty miles per hour, forty miles per hour, fifty? What is the decibel level coming from an average A T V?
I do not know the exact decimal level, but I have been, um, I have been in a vehicle, my, pushing myself in a vehicle that was followed by one. I mean, this is a while ago, and you cannot hear that over the vehicle.
Well, it, it says here in the reading that, uh, the vehicle cannot exceed ninety-six decibels.
Correct.
Well, ninety-six decibels, that's, that's loud music and so that's, that's rather high. So when would they?
But the, but the.
Reach ninety-six decibels out in the country, not in the city?
Also has the same rules for a car, a motorcycle and a truck. So it's the same setting, they're just making sure that you don't exceed those.
What I'm getting at here, in going through some of these neighborhoods, what's gonna be the decibel reading coming from the vehicles?
Again, I don't know the exact decimal level, but it'd be similar to a car.
Because, um, uh, from what I can read, it could be quite a bit. So I'm just curious as to what you knew about that.
Sure, like I said, I don't know the exa- exact number on them, but, and I, again, I don't know the exact number on a Ford one fifty or, you know, a Chevy three-quarter ton. But, you know, I live on Seamer Street and, and, uh, there's cars that go by and trucks that go by mine. I know four trucks, I can tell you what colors, names, everything, and I know they exceed the decimal level.
Now, some, some cities have noise limits at night. And here, for example, is one that is, um, near Waukesha, Waukesha County. Sixty decibels at night in the residential. So I'm just curious at what the reading's gonna be, you know, ten o'clock at night with vehicles passing through.
Again, I don't, I don't know the exact number, so.
Probably comparable to a motorcycle or lawnmower going down the street. About ninety decibels.
I would, I would argue that. I would, I would argue that, you know, you're talking about a lawnmower, I have a, I have a twenty-six horsepower diesel to go down the street at eleven miles an hour, which mine tops out, I would agree, that is a loud machine. To go twenty-five miles an hour down the street in one of these, you're almost idling or a little bit of past idle. So you're not using your motor like you are a lawnmower down the road. A factory motorcycle going down the street that comes factory exhaust, doing twenty-five miles an hour is nowhere near those decimals. Two of my neighbors have Harley-Davidsons that have, um, let's say, modified exhaust. Those going down the street, I would say are louder than what should be. So the loudest part and the decimal part, like I said, take these as a vehicle or a car or a truck. You're gonna be about the same noise or decimal level as what a vehicle is. To kind of answer your question, I'm not sure why they have that level there, and I don't know what the D O T one is, but I know they do have one.
At ninety-six, that's, frankly scares me. Because when is that gonna occur? That's, that's.
Well, like I said, going down a vehicle, I think you would drive a station wagon, if I recall right, or you did. Going down a vehicle with your, or a street with your vehicle and one of these side by side, factory exhaust for both vehicles, you won't know which ones driving behind each other.
Any other questions or comments? Isaac, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No, uh, as for the, as for the businesses, no, we did not do a, um, a direct written survey. But every business that we've spoken with personally, uh, matter of fact, we have quite a few businesses that have volunteered to even give us money towards the signs because they realize the revenue that these can generate for them. Um, and we have not had one business that has said, we don't want these, because they all understand that these are revenue-making for them, so. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Um, we have one person who registered in favor but did not ask to speak, Chad Digman. Is that correct? All right.
Does he have an address?
I'm sorry?
Address. The address.
Yes, the address is here.
Could you share it?
Uh, if I can read his writing, I think it's five-five-one-one Heritage Lane. All right. And finally, we have someone who has asked to speak for informational purposes only, and that's Jack Ludke from Main Street Program.
My name is Jack Ludke, I'm the executive director for the Platteville Main Street Program. And, uh, I was asked by the city manager to do a impromptu survey of the businesses downtown in regard to this issue. And, uh, knowing that it was only on for information tonight, I did start this morning and talked to nine businesses on Main Street, eight of which are not, uh, bars or restaurants who had no direct, uh, indication that they would uh, reap benefits from having the, uh, A T Vs on Main Street. But all of them were in supportive of the, uh, proposal. Uh, their concerns were similar to the ones, uh, that have been expressed here tonight, particularly about safety uh, on Main Street, uh, with cross traffic. Uh, but they also pointed out that we have those issues today. There's a skateboarder, a longboarder that comes down the street that we probably could time at thirty miles an hour. And he comes flying through there, sometimes on the sidewalk. We have, uh, currently scooters, uh, driven by some of the prominent, uh, people in town who are very difficult to see, particularly when you're crossing and there is a, uh, large pickup truck maybe parked at the corner. You don't see them coming. Uh, I noticed the other day, one of them has a flag up on top, so you can see his scooter. So the same issues that we currently have on Main Street with many of the people utilizing the street, uh, traffic flow are gonna be, uh, relevant to the A T Vers as well. Uh, the parking issue, uh, was brought up by one individual. Um, and I think you got the answer, uh, tonight from, uh, Isaac, uh, they will be parking. Um, I take issue with one thing he said was during the week, if you have people who have these units that take advantage of Mountain View Park, they're probably gonna leave their hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment that they have in their camper units and their pickup trucks and their trailers and maybe get on their U T Vs and come downtown. And they won't be hauling those big units downtown, which is great. Uh, we'd love to see them there. Uh, I'm sure if I talk to the rest of the restaurant owners and some of the bar owners, uh, they would be happy to, uh, support that as well. Uh, they would be the ones who would primarily be, um, beneficiaries of this. Uh, and I also, uh, wanna relate that I had lived in Darlington for three years. And that traffic to Darlington is a, uh, lifeblood of money to many of the businesses in, in Darlington. And as far as I know, uh, through discussions with Jason King, uh, that I've heard publicly, uh, they have not had any serious issues with the A T Vers, uh, allowing them on the, on the city streets. And in fact, if you're a homeowner there, you can get on your A T V at your house, come down to the trail and go. You don't have to load it on a trailer anymore and bring it down to the trail. So, uh, I would say that all of Main Street, uh, businesses would support it. And of course, it's not a written survey, but, uh, verbally, they all committed to, uh, wanting to support that effort. And, uh, I can also get, uh, more contacts, uh, before your next, uh, meeting for the action. And, uh, I can also get, uh, more contacts, uh, before your next, uh, meeting for the action item. Any questions?
Questions, anyone?
So, I had questions that came up while he was talking, but I don't know if he's the one who would answer them. So, do I ask them anyhow? Um, the two thoughts are, so Second Street parking, if they can go on Main Street and they can go on Second Street, but they don't find parking for those, you know, streets, can they go around the corner and park in a lot?
Currently, Second Street isn't one of the routes.
Oh, I'm sorry. What is the cross-street that?
Third Street.
Third?
And that's to kind of shut them into the parking lots back here.
So, they can use the parking lots and whatever entrance or exit might not be on Third Street, or would they have to always come and go off the same? Sorry, I just could get that back open.
And again, the parking would be restricted to the hours of operation.
That would, that, they would be then out of the parking lots by eleven o'clock at night unless we made it early or like ten or nine or something.
I mean, it's currently written eleven, but, um, yes.
But the motorcycles will still wake you up at two-thirty. So, the motorcycles are still gonna wake us up at two-thirty anyway, so, but anyhow. Um, and the other piece was just that you referenced them parking at Mountain View or anywhere. Any Platteville resident who wants to get to the trail is going to have to take a trailer, or anyone coming from outside and wanting to get on the trail. Where will they park to get on the trail in Platteville? Or what's the, the most logical space? Is there a space between here and Belmont? Where do they park and get on?
So, kinda answer both, answer both your questions. We'll start with the first one. So, as the chief has pointed out, Second Street is not on the route. We don't want it on the route. So, uh, we have Third Street on there so that they can get to the parking areas while they're shopping, you know, if Main Street is full, um, et cetera. And to leave those, they have to follow Third Street to either get to Dewey Street or to Main Street. To get there, they can't go, continue up Mineral Street, or they can't go down and come up Second Street as well, you know, so, um, that would be for that part. As for the parking in the town, if they're camping, you know, they can leave their vehicles there, which you'd much rather have a ten-to-twelve-foot machine come downtown and park than what you would a twenty-two-foot truck with a thirty-foot trailer behind it taking up multiple stalls. If you're coming in for the day, um, you know, one of the businesses in towns that has a larger, uh, parking area, you know, they could agree to park with them. Um, or, um, you know, as a, as a residence, et cetera. So, you know, if that's, you know, if there's something that you're concerned about where somebody just comes into town and parks, we'll say on, you know, Third, well, say, um, where I live on Pitt Street, you know, we could put something in there. But all the vehicles do have to be off the street by eleven PM and can't be back on until six AM. So, you know, the, even though the streets, the routes close at eleven PM, they can't say, well, we're not driving, we're just gonna park it. They have to be off those routes to open up those parking stalls.
I'm just picturing like it's Friday, you want your home base to be Platteville, you're gonna take your trailer somewhere on the, on the map.
Sure.
Get off, go ride, come back, have dinner downtown Platteville, and get back loaded up by eleven o'clock.
Well, we've seen in the past.
Somewhere there's a group of trailers.
Correct. So, what we've seen in the past and what we've looked, talked with people is they generally start at a business. You know, they start where they can eat right there when they get off the trail, um, right when they're done. A lot of times, they don't wanna load up and then go somewhere else. They just wanna eat wherever they end up at and get off. It's kinda same with snowmobiles. Um, um, so that's pretty much what, probably what you're gonna have. You're gonna have the Super Eight, they're ecstatic. They have a big parking area down there. You know, they're looking forward to this business because they can handle the trailers, and so, yeah.
We could, uh, is it true, Doug, that we could make it illegal? Uh, I mean, like, you know, twelve trailers could, could park on West Main Street or on Broadway. Fourteen trailers. And, uh, I mean, we could have an ordinance that just, that would not allow that. That's correct?
It would be somewhat artful in the crafting of it, but I mean, it would take some unique language to, to try and make that enforceable.
I also, uh, wonder if this has been, I'm assuming this has also been to the Parks Department since we continue to talk about Mountain View Park and any additional regulations that might be needed there, not only relative to camping and trailers, but additional parking by people who aren't camping.
The Parks Department was, was at our meetings, both meetings that we had, and they're in favor as well, or he was in favor, so, yeah.
It has not gone to the Park Board?
Not the board, but we did have a representative from the Parks Department there.
Other questions? Yes?
I'd just like to add something too, that, uh, they mentioned just the revenues, uh, actually coming into the community to the existing businesses. But, uh, Isaac can probably tell me, there isn't a service, uh, industry or business in town here for ATVs, is there? Specifically? And I know the one in Darlington, for instance, is a huge business, both for servicing, selling, and also renting ATVs. So that if a family comes and they're short one vehicle, they'll rent it there for the day. So, in essence, if this is enacted, that could, uh, pose an opportunity for another business to enter the, the community as well, so.
Thank you. All right. This is just information this evening. Obviously, there are going to, we'll have at least one more, um, one more time when we discuss this before we, um, actually make a decision. Go ahead, Don.
I'm a little bit torn about, you know, the, the whole thing. I understand the, uh, idea of, you know, businesses will see more income, but, you know, if you ask the business, do you want more money? They'll say yes. You know, it's like asking a kid, do you want more candy? Yes. Um, so, I, that goes out the window. I think we're, we should be focusing more on how this affects this, the people who live on the routes that have to deal with it. Um, and how it changes the, the makeup of the, uh, city as far as this added, uh, traffic or, or danger, uh, for it. So, for instance, chief, uh, just, uh, in March, uh, Grant County changed their ordinance to allow, uh, usage on their roads, correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
Is that currently in place, or do they have to wait for signs to be put up?
I believe that they're waiting on the signage.
Okay. Now, there is a loophole. Sure, come on up.
So, as for the county and the township roads, so we'll say Platteville Township, all Platteville Township roads at this time are open once they become signed. Answer that. But they are not gonna assign every road. They're doing routes kinda like we are. Their routes will kinda interchange with the route entrances that we have plus a couple additional routes because they have additional roads. A county standpoint, all county roads, say County B, County D, uh, County H between Dickieville and, uh, Kiba City are actually open at this time.
Without proper signage?
They are signed. You can come to the city of Platteville right now from the west side and see a dead-end sign because there is sign to the county road. You can go all the way to Petosse and you'll see routes left, right, and straight. They're, they're marked. That is already taken care of and done.
There, but also, there's a loophole as far as, uh, open, open intoxicants in UTV.
There is not anymore. That is in that packet again, which I've sent you, is also another packet. Grant County just passed that. A UTV cannot have an open intoxicant, whether you're the driver or a passenger.
But they can carry intoxicants that are not open.
So, you can in a car too.
Thank you for that. But yes, they can carry it cooler, whatever.
Correct.
But they're not.
But as you're going down the road, it should be, you can. It's against the law. You will get ticketed if you're driving down the road, whether you're a driver, excuse me, a driver, a passenger in the front seat, if you're a passenger in the backseat, and you get pulled over with an open intoxicant, you will be ticketed.
I think what Don's concerned with, and I am too, there is a culture, um, with drinking and ATVing and snowmobiling and drinking and, you know, there's, it's what, I mean, like, growing up, that's all I heard. That's the point. You grab your beers and you get in your snowmobile and you get drunk and you drive around. Um, and so I think what I'm concerned with and Don's concerned with is even though it's illegal, it's, it's a recreational activity and that might happen more frequently than drinking and driving. And so, just making sure that that doesn't become an issue in Platteville is what we're really concerned about.
Sure.
So, I, and I know you can't control people's individual behaviors.
Correct.
But there is a culture behind it.
And that's why it's in the ordinances. We've actually asked for a couple additional pieces to be put in there. Instead of just having outlined, you know, go to statute A slash one, you know, we actually asked for be picked, cause people don't, they read those statute numbers and they won't go read what that statute is.
Right.
We actually asked for like a three paragraph deal to, you know, to be put right in there. So, when they read that, that's what it is. You know, and I relate back to anything, you know, if you see somebody doing that, call the police department.
Can you speak to your club's structure and the culture that if we were to discover kind of an ongoing issue, is there some sort of line of communication that you have a mailing list that you can educate or something?
I'm not sure about a mailing list, but I can tell you from being with the snowmobile club and a couple other clubs with like this, a lot of these type activities are actually police more within than what they are, uh, through the police department. I mean, the police department can actually be involved as well, but, you know, if we see somebody as members, see somebody that's doing something wrong, you know, they're speeding, they're going down the wrong road, or they're, you know, they're creating issues, you know, we wanna take care of that because we don't wanna lose the privilege, you know, so we make sure, um, and I'll go back to the snowmobile club, which a lot of these guys are members on. Two years ago, I saw people that were on the trails when they were closed. We took care of it, you know. Get off our trails, the next one will be called to the authorities because they are on the trail that was closed. You know, so we're, we're right there with everybody else, the responsible people, I should say, trying to get this, so, you know, that doesn't happen or, you know. Um, you know, people aren't, like I said, going to neighborhoods are not supposed to be, creating the noise, not supposed to. You know, we don't want that because we wanna be able to use these routes, just like anybody else does.
Isaac, you keep referencing the packet you gave us. Are you referencing this ordinance then?
Yep.
When you reference that, that we just got.
Yep, that is the Grant County ordinance, I'm sorry. The city ordinance that they proposed.
I'm having trouble because I'm like, I'm trying to find this packet.
Did you need to tell them how that reads, Kenny?
Yeah. So, that pack, or that, the information I gave you, those two pages, it actually reads like a newspaper. So, instead of going down one, just flip it over to the next page and it follows right down the column. So, instead of being like a two-piece paper where you go to the far right, go to the next page.
Okay.
If you're going down the left column, follow the second page, go down.
Then here, then here, then here.
Yep, I'm sorry about that, yeah. Cause it was taken out of the newspaper, so that is published.
Isaac, you mentioned that you were a part of a ride that had four hundred?
Approximately four hundred and twenty-five registered people, yeah.
Uh, chief, would we require a permit for a group of that size to go through town?
Do you wanna address that, how they travel typically in the bigger groups?
Yep. So, you will see, um, in a group, like I said, there is about two hundred, there's about approximately two hundred machines in that group. There's four hundred and twenty, some, four hundred and twenty-some people that were registered. In the group that I rode with, we had three machines. Um, a couple, they, they spread them out. People, you don't have two hundred machines going down a road. I was in a ride about two weeks ago or three weeks ago where there's approximately a hundred machines. Uh, Mr. Digman was on the same ride with us. There was nine stops. I never saw him all day. Um, that time, I was in a, I was in a group of two people. The most I've ever seen is ten people, or ten machines, cause this, they're not grouped up, you know, so, if you see, um, like a benefit ride for Harleys, we'll say, or car cruises, or you have fifty cars coming through town, you won't see that with UTVs. That's, so, um, that's kind of a misconception there. You know, you have two, maybe six, you know, in that type category, so. And those rides, like everything else, they're not every weekend, you know, there's once a month, but they're here. There's one in a different area. You know, they're not always the same directions, so. The nice thing with those rides is, you know, they, they create a lot of money for the club, the town, or wherever they stop at. And a lot of those proceeds are actually given away to charities, so.
Again, I'm assuming that like any other organized event, like the five K Run for Haiti, or whatever we approved tonight, we would have a procedure that would need to be followed if people were going to bring a ride of that nature through town.
If it was gonna qualify as a parade or something of that nature, yes. I mean, we've had.
An organized ride.
We've had car cruises come through and they don't meet that criteria, and they've had upwards of two hundred vehicles.
Any other questions for Mr. Shandling? Any other comments? Thank you. All right.
I, I would like to see written results of a survey for downtown businesses. Written survey? Okay. Well, there's always Survey Monkey.
I would like to see some sort of feedback from, um, all the residents that live on these routes, that these proposed routes, like some sort of mailing, uh, of some sort. Um, getting a much stronger stance from, uh, UW Platteville because it goes right, uh, along their property and there's many students and faculty and staff that would have to deal with that. Uh, the school district, what their, uh, thoughts are on it with the two schools that are on these routes. Um, the county, actually, I'd be interested, uh, after they've been through it for a while, to think of their decision and if they, what they think of it. Law enforcement, sheriff department, police department, wh-what their thoughts are on it. Um, Safe Routes Committee hasn't been consulted yet. Uh, there's bike routes throughout the city that have been solely being created and that's, is overlapping, uh, these proposed routes like on Ridge Avenue. Uh, and just bikers in, in general, because that's another added, uh, item, uh, traffic, uh, thing to deal with. I think it drastically changed the traffic, uh, on our major, major thoroughfares through the city. Um, and that's for the proposals, eight and a half months out of the year that that will be changed. And I think this is something that you can't just decide in a few weeks.
But you've heard some requests. I'm just wondering about staff time and, and whether or not there's anything that has been requested that may be difficult to do in a timely fashion. I'm thinking that if you look at the.
Feedback from all of the residents along the routes would be.
Yeah, I, I guess we, if there's a consensus from the council that you'd like us to do a mailing, we're happy to do that. That will delay the timeline. O-otherwise, the other groups are relatively easy to reach out to.
So, consensus to the council? I, I'm sorry, Isaac, I, I'll let you come back up. I can't hear you when you.
So, one of your questions was regarding to the routes and with what, say, the local police or the highway department and the sheriff's department has, what they think about it. So, not one municipality, whether it be a village, a town, um, a township, um, that has had these. Now, one municipality has restricted them further from what they started with, and now one municipality has closed them. As you can see, Darlington started with, I believe, two routes a couple of years ago. They went to the entire city now. Lancaster started with two routes. They're proposing going to the entire city. Petosse was two routes. The majority of them that have them are expanding their routes because they're not having an issue with problems. Um, we, three of us were just at the Grant County Highway Department meeting last Thursday with a representative of the DOT. And discussion was brought up there with us as with other municipalities, and it was a positive note all the way through. There wasn't one concern about, you know, this caused this, this caused that. That wasn't said, so. Um, I do understand some of the concerns that you have. You know, I live up in Pitt Street. I have for nine years, so I've lived in other areas of town as well. Um, but for directly, domestically changing the traffic count of the traffic routes in the city of Platteville, I would have to disagree with you in that. You're not bringing in hundreds and thousands of vehicles every day, or even on the weekends or a couple of times a year. You're gonna be talking about a lot less than that, so.
I'm not talking about volume.
What's that?
I'm not talking about volume.
I'm not. I'm talking about the number of them. You know, you're increasing these. There's more cars every day. There's more bicycles every day. There's more, uh, motorcycles every day. So, everything else increases as well. So, yeah, I'm not saying to the point where I'm getting kind of discouraged in this, but, uh, bringing these on like, I mean, like a stereotyping, I think is wrong because, um, not everything is negative about it. There's a lot of positive stuff that goes on with these as well, so, with these groups.
Can anyone answer the question of bike routes and, uh, how that interacts? I assume you follow.
It'd be just like a, like, again, as I said multiple times here, you'd be just like a vehicle and you'll have to follow the same rules as what a vehicle does, and you cannot be in a bike route. As far as I know, there's only one bike round town and that's in Ridge Avenue. And Mr. Sneller actually lives in Ridge Avenue, so he can answer those questions the best, but, um, you know, again, the routes that we've chosen are some of the wider streets and the ones that, you know, we're not trying to bring them into the traffic. I understand the high schools on there. But, you know, I drive that road multiple times a day and I don't see a lot of high schoolers walking Second, or, excuse me, Water Street. Um, there are some, but, you know, they should be on the sidewalks. They shouldn't be out in the street.
You have to cross the street at some point.
Yep, and again, you have to follow those rules as well, so.
Right.
I guess since we brought up the high school, I'm just thinking, and Roundtree Hall and the university, places where there's gonna be youth that may have theirs and wanna just, that will be the problem areas, right? Where they may ride it.
Yep, so our, so our original route that we, our original map that we proposed actually did include, um, Yep, so our, so our original route that we, our original map that we proposed actually did include, um, South Chestnut Street to Southwest Road. And then down towards the roundabout so you could get down to Business Highway one fifty-one. After a group discussion between the Platteville, um, itself, the township as well as staff, you know, we took that into consideration. I own twenty some rental properties by the university, so I'm well aware of what students think in this area. We took that out of there. We don't want them in that direction. That's why the only route you'll have in that area, which you kind of need, is County B going outside of town, because it's the main thoroughway. And that's where I brought it before is, you know, we're not asking for a straight line to trail type situation. You have to be on your route or be on that route to ride them. You can't take off on the, say, South Hickory Street, or you can't go up Preston Drive College Drive, so.
All right, I think that's it. Um, again, uh, Don has requested a certain amount of information. Is there a consensus of the council that we should have that information available to us? I would like it. Okay, others?
What work does it entail?
Well, we would have to do a mailing, so we have to compile the addresses and send out a, a notice and give people time to be able to respond with their, uh, concerns or feedback about the routes.
You'll do a mailing to all the people that live along the routes? Is that what you want, Don?
Yes. They're the ones that are going to be most affected by this change.
Would an informational meeting that wasn't part of a lengthy evening like this suffice if it was published and announced? Right, but I think coming to council meetings are sometimes not people's first pick for that.
So this is what the public hearings are supposed to be for, as I understand, instead of doing individual mailings.
This is information and discussion, which is different than a public hearing.
Yep, so the next one will be, or whenever we have one. I could have, and I still could at the next meeting, which other individuals and other groups have in this town when they want a project to go through, whether it be privately, housing, et cetera. I could bring fifty to a hundred people in this room and have them all say approximately the same thing, give or take a few things. And then you will not see ninety-five percent of them people in this, um, auditorium again. But I didn't do that because I'm trying to give you the answers you want and to represent most of them. I mean, I've spoken to people that live on a lot of the routes. If I didn't think this was something that was good for the city of Platteville, whether it would be on my route or a different route, I would have brought it to the, brought it to the council or to the staff. So, I understand you're going to have people that, yep, we don't want that. And a lot of it's going to be because of, as we find out now, they're misinformed about these machines and what goes on, so.
So then, uh, what Robin has suggested as an informational meeting might be a good idea. Because it gives, uh, it gives everyone a chance to hear what the real story is instead of rumors, innuendos, and made up information.
And that could be, that could be at the next council meeting when, you know.
No, I, I think we talked about an informational meeting that's separate from the council meeting, just because here we are. I mean, you know, who knows how long that agenda would be, but an informational meeting allows people to, uh, freer, uh, ability. You can post maps around and you can talk about it and things like that. So I would support having an informational meeting.
And would that be in lieu of the mailing?
I, I didn't ask for the mailing.
I understand that. I understand that.
I'm not, I'm not.
I'm asking if, if that, in your opinion, would that be in lieu of the mailing?
That, Don, that.
No, because it still won't reach everyone that's affected.
Well, it's public knowledge. An entire city of Platteville would actually be involved with more people than what is affected on the routes. So in my opinion, it'd reach more people than what individual mailings would be to the people that are just on the road.
It's, it's fair, and I think it's not about your rights.
Well, I understand, yep.
Which we honor and we appreciate you not bringing, you know, a hundred people to make statements tonight. We know, what you're saying is there are, there is support for it.
Correct.
So we hear that loud and clear right now.
And I understand there's going to be people against it as well.
Right, so we don't want to look back, pass it quickly, and then have a huge uproar because people aren't aware what's coming down the pipeline until they drive by their house and they go, whoa, when did that happen? So we, I, I totally appreciate the obligation to be aware of what's going on in your community and, and, you know, what's coming down on public council meeting agendas. But people aren't paying attention to that always, right? Until the four-wheeler drives by their window. So it's only about trying to prevent future headaches if it were to pass, I think is what Don's suggesting.
Have any of these been done on the basis of trial basis, seeing as believing?
Well, as I spoke before with.
Otherwise, if you, if we tried it for four months.
It's right in the packet that the city, that the chief gave you, that after a cer, or it can be closed down at any time by this, by the city. Not the one that I gave you, but the one that the chief gave you.
I know, it's in there.
Perhaps I can answer this question. We have seen cities that have had ordinances that have sunsetted after a specific period of time for, for potential renewal.
Yes, I think.
And as Isaac mentioned, there are cities that have started with fewer routes and added routes, and I don't know, there might be cities that have had everything open and closed some things. Like I said, I, I visit a, uh, local community that definitely at the ends of their main street have ATV route stops here at each end of the. I mean, I'm not saying it's right or wrong. I'm just saying, I see that. I don't know if it was ever open because I didn't start paying attention to those signs until recently.
I personally don't know of a municipality that has opened a trail in an area and then went backwards or closed it down myself, so.
All right, well, I think we probably have had a lot of questions answered and still have some questions. Um, again, I'm, I'm going to ask the council if there's a consensus to, um, I believe you said, Don, for the Safe Routes Committee, um, Parks and Rec, I believe, would be looking at it. Is that correct, Luke, or not?
We can do that if that's what you want.
And nor, normally you would or would not look at this, I, I guess. Tell me again, Don, which organization or which, um, community you were thinking.
Uh, all the residents on these proposed routes.
Right.
University, Wisconsin Platteville, the school district, the county, as far as their feedback, even though it's only been a month or so in place. Uh, law enforcement, Safe Routes Committee. And, um, well, I wanted to ask bikers in general because they're one of the, uh, folks on the road that, at the bulk to, uh, this traffic.
All right, council members, are you in agreement with that? Do we have a consensus?
Wanting to try it?
All right, I think we have a consensus.
Okay, so we'll plan on doing a, a mailing, um, to the, in addition to these other groups. We don't have a specific way to reach out to bikers, uh, uh, outside of safe routes, but, um, we'll, we'll proceed with the mailing.
All right, and we'll do this as quickly as we can so that these gentlemen have some kind of response. All right, next is part-time seasonal wage and fringe budget amendment, again, in our packet for information and discussion.
So, uh, earlier in the pack.
Oh, ju, ju, just a minute. And an informational meeting? Did we?
Uh, that was not included in Don's.
I could add it, I could amend that.
Add an informational meeting?
Informational meeting, because I think people deserve to hear what, you know.
All right, I think we need to coordinate this with staff and see when that might be, um, feasible.
And I want to note that I think that that is beneficial to their ability to voice their response to the base and its gap.
Exactly. Otherwise, I, I think it's a benefit for the group to be able to, uh, explain.
And address concerns that come up. So perhaps we, uh, maybe we could follow the same protocol that we use for the bike routes and do a mailing that informs people of the informational meeting and gives them an opportunity to respond, to provide feedback as well. That's good.
Right. All right, anything else on that? Otherwise, I'm going on to see part-time seasonal wage and fringe budget amendment. Nicola.
Earlier in the, uh, agenda, we had the, uh, passage of the budget administration update to the financial management policy. And so these two items under information discussion are actual, uh, requested budget amendments, uh, being recommended by staff. The first one is this one, uh, so the, um, the two thousand eighteen budget included, um, the reallocation and utilization of, uh, part-time seasonal help between streets departments and parks departments um, in the, in, in the city. And, uh, at that time, there was the intent to, um, actually move a larger portion of that from, from the street to the parks department to help with the branding initiatives and landscaping, um, flowers and so forth around the city. Um, and so, but not, but not all of that actually got included in the budget. So this amendment is, um, to move, uh, three thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars from the, uh, part-time seasonal in the streets department to the part-time seasonal in the parks department. Those two departments are in separate, um, functional categories, and that is why it needs to come to the council for approval.
Any questions, anyone? All right, then the next item is debt service budget amendment number three.
Okay, so this is, uh, uh, actually, that was number two that we just talked about, but I didn't get the number two on there, so I apologize. Uh, so this would be budget amendment number three. Um, the first one actually was when we amended the CIP for the parking lots and street construction. That was a few meetings ago. This is budget, um, uh, budget amendment number three. And so also, um, in the two thousand eighteen budget, uh, there should have been seventy thousand sixty-one dollars of interest from the two thousand seventeen B bond issue, um, but that amount was unintentionally omitted. And so this, um, is a recommendation to amend the budget to include the seventy thousand sixty-one dollars to, um, the interest in the debt service fund, and that would be moving those funds from the general fund. And, uh, you can see there in, in the staff report, it's an explanation of the, uh, general fund unassigned fund balance is currently, um, drafted to be two million three hundred and sixteen thousand three hundred and seventeen dollars. Um, and, uh, that is actually twenty-nine percent of the two thousand eighteen general fund expenditure budget. Um, and we have an internal policy that, um, recommends striving for twenty percent. So this budget amendment would slightly reduce that nine percent extra, um, in, in the unassigned fund balance. So again, the, uh, the requested, uh, budget amendment would be to, uh, transfer seventy thousand sixty-one dollars from the general fund to the debt service fund.
Right, any questions, anyone? So that concludes our information and discussion items, and the next item would be a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn. I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second and we'll vote.
Turk? Yes. Dos?
Yes.
Fine?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Sackhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everybody.